Good evening, welcome to the South St. Paul Board of Education Regular Meeting in May 26, 2020. It's a virtual meeting. Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Aaron.
Here.
Inspector Felton. Inspector Diaz.
Here.
Inspector Bjorkland.
Here.
Inspector Walker.
Here.
Inspector Lallaberty.
Here.
And Chair McClellan.
Here.
That's seven present.
Thank you. First, I'm looking for a motion to approve the school board meeting agenda of May 26, 2020, and the committee of the whole regular meeting minutes, May 11, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Lallaberty.
Yes.
Inspector Aaron.
Yes.
Inspector Felton.
Yes.
Inspector Diaz.
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland.
Yeah.
Inspector Walker.
Yes.
Chair McClellan.
Yes.
That's seven yeses.
Thank you. First up is Quality in Action: Blended Learning Update. Dr. Webb.
Thanks Chair McClellan. Pleased to be able to share with you tonight an update about blended learning and our, from our blended learning leaders. I just want to brag about them as a handoff to them, but they've been doing good work for a number of years in our school district. And when the pandemic arrived, we were way out in front because of the work they'd been doing, not for just the past few months, but for the past several years. So, training teachers, you know, helping to even just communicate with our community about, what is a technology levy? So, three years ago, our community could step up and say yes to a technology levy that positioned devices and equipment and training for all of our staff over the past several years to put us in a position to transition well into distance learning in the pandemic. So, Paul Boucher will lead it off, and he'll introduce the rest of his team and give you a few updates about our blended learning experience here in the district. Paul?
Thank you Superintendent Webb. Tonight, our digital learning team, the coordinator, Digital Learning Coordinator Lori Peterson and Digital Learning Specialist Connor Murphy, are going to share some of the results of their work with this year's blended learning cohort members, and of their work with all teachers and administrators as they jumped into the digital deep end of Minnesota's distance learning requirement this year. The digital learning team was formed three years ago, and some of you were on the board at that point, through a restructuring of our technology department to focus our efforts and resources more squarely on the point where learning and technology meet. I cannot be prouder of this team's work this year and in past years, or of the work of our wider technology team in supporting them and our students, staff, and families. So, I'm going to hand this over to Connor and to Lori Peterson. And Connor, can you share your screen?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
And Connor, the floor is you. Yours now. Connor and Lori.
And your mic might be off.
But your picture looks great.
Yes, absolutely. Here it comes. Paul, would you like me to brag a little bit more about our?
Yep, if you could take another moment to brag, that'd be great.
Yeah, just, I'm just proud of our students, I'm proud of our staff, I'm proud of our school leaders, all partnering together to just share vision and direction. And like I said, everything good in our school district doesn't just start a few weeks ago or in a crisis. It starts years ago with really good planning and organizing. And that's what our tech team has done through training individual cohorts that they'll share with you here in a minute. Connor, are you set to go?
I think so. Do you guys see the presentation?
We sure do.
Awesome. Okay, I'll kick us off then.
Thank you.
So, you guys should have received some background information on the work that the blended learning cohort has done in terms of structuring and the beliefs as to why we put that into place. So, tonight's presentation is more centered on a reflection from the teachers that have gone through this. So, for those of you that are unfamiliar, this is the digital learning team. Connor Murphy, Digital Learning Specialist, I took over for Kristen Johnson, February 19th this year, not knowing what was coming, but we've jumped right in and we've, we've really made a comprehensive program, I think, that has given us one of the best jumpstarts on distance learning in the state. Lori Peterson is the Digital Learning Coordinator, and then, of course, Paul is our Director of Technology. So, I wanted to start the highlights today with a visual representation from the reflection that our blended learning cohort members completed at the end of their experience. Usually, we have them in person and we're filling stuff out, but obviously, that didn't happen this year. So, we had them create, complete a reflection form, and what I did is I took all of those responses and I created a word cloud from that. And I'm going to let you draw your own conclusions based on the word cloud, but the one thing I did want to point out are the top three words I saw, and that's "students" or "student," and then "learning," and then "agency." And I think that's kind of a really powerful way to see the representation of what blended learning kind of prepares our teachers to do and what it gives our students. "Agency" is a word that you guys will hear a lot in the next couple of slides, so that's something I just wanted to kind of give you a visual of. With that reflection in mind, we felt that it would be most important for you guys to hear from, directly from teachers who have gone through the cohort. So, we have several short video reflections we'd like to share with you. First up, we have Brenda Applequist. She's a third grade teacher at Lincoln Center, and she's going to share how blended learning helped her in her classroom, and especially with building community.
Hey there, my name is Brenda Applequist. I teach third grade at Lincoln Center. And my greatest success with the blended learning experience was using playlists with my literacy teaching and my math teaching. And I think the greatest benefit offered me a lot more flexibility with my differentiated groups, such as guided reading and guided math. And it really provided students opportunities to work independently, to work with partners, to balance technology with paperwork or games, and it really gave them ownership of what they were doing. While I was working with small groups or individual students, the kids really got used to this method of learning and really felt ownership when they could kind of choose their own adventure. A big part of the success was having students reflect on it every single week to see what they did really well, what they wanted to change, and what their plan was for the following week, along with ideas for me to add to our playlist that maybe I hadn't put on there, but they would like to see on there. And then also having the parents be a big part of that, because the parents looked at the reflections each and every week.
So, that was Brenda. Next up, we have Ally Voight, who's a fourth grade teacher at Capoja. She will speak to how the blended learning cohort helped her training as a teacher and helped meet the needs of her diverse students.
Hi, I'm Ally Voight. I teach fourth grade at Capoja. I joined the blended learning cohort to improve my own teaching practices and to get a better idea of the digital learning tools that were provided by the district. Through the blended learning cohort, I have been able to improve my reading stations by adding a playlist, which provided my students with a lot of agency in making choices about their own learning, but it also really allowed me to differentiate for the needs of all my different learners. Through the playlist and the station-rotation model, I was able to create engaging and purposeful independent practice, so that while I was working with small groups of students at my desk on what they needed, I knew that my independent learners out in the classroom were engaged, they were completing purposeful learning, and it really allowed them to be their best independently, which also gave me more focused time with the learners in my small group.
Next, we have Julia Brunner, who teaches science at the CLC. She will talk about creating a playlist that increased student engagement and pushed the students and herself out of her comfort zone.
Hi, I am Julia Brunner. I'm the science teacher at the CLC, and this year I participated in the blended learning cohort. I developed a playlist for my 10th grade biology class for protein synthesis, and it was amazing. They were able to work at their own pace. I gave multiple options, different activities that they could do. I used a lot of tools that I've never used before, like EdPuzzle and quizzes, way more than just the cahoot that I've been doing in the past. Kids had to come and check off what they learned and show me that they knew it. I was able to assess each kid individually in my class, talk to each kid in my class, and help them when they were struggling. And while I was doing that, other kids could keep working, and it was amazing. So, I highly recommend being part of this cohort. It pushes you out of your comfort zone and makes you a better teacher, and it helped my kids as well. I pushed them out of their comfort zones and use technology, which made everybody's lives a lot easier. So, I highly recommend it. Do it next year.
Again, that was Julia Brunner from the CLC. Next up, we have Chris Moore, who is a science teacher at the secondary building. He will discuss how the blended learning cohort helped him implement technology into the classroom setting and encourage student rigor and choice.
Hello, my name is Chris Moore, and I just wanted to share some of the experiences I had through the blended learning cohort. I was so happy I was able to be a part of this cohort. I was able to learn a great deal about how to implement and apply technology into the classroom. I decided to use a playlist for my technology incorporation, and it was a very, very valuable experience. I was thrilled that SchoolG allowed me to set rules so that kids, as they progressed through, would have different units open up for them so that they could continue on. I found that the kids were able to progress very nicely through this with that feature of SchoolG, and they were able to get a great deal of learning out of it. Because they were able to progress at their own pace, I was able to check in with 90 to 100% of my students every day and see how they were doing. The students were fully engaged every day on the topic and the lesson. I'm so happy I was able to do this. The kids, I got some feedback from them. They really enjoyed the creativity that they were able to use within the unit. I had them making videos where they had to explain various concepts to me, and they had to do this in a creative way. Many of them chose to do it through skits and, and explain it to me that way. The learning was great. I compared the scores this year to last year, and the scores were one to two points higher this year. So, it shows that they were able to do it, but the engagement of the students is what really was impressive for me. They, they were able to engage each and every day into the learning, and I'm so happy I was able to be a part of this, this learning.
And last, we have Carly Gates, who teaches sixth grade language and literature. She's going to speak to the ability to leverage her knowledge of blended learning to prepare herself and her students on distance learning.
Hi, guys. So, as I sit in my classroom for the first time since March, it's kind of powerful to go back and revisit and reflect on how blended learning in general has allowed me to still connect with my students, even though I definitely wish that they were filling these seats and making these halls really noisy. I think the biggest takeaway for me as far as blended learning comes and goes is that when you engage in these types of conversations and you're given time to get creative, it levels up your teaching, and it gives you an opportunity to try new things, and it encourages you to stretch yourself as an educator. I think that for those who have been in blended learning before, those who have experience with EdTech, and those of us who are in the cohort just this year, it definitely prepped us for the unknown. We had no idea that this is how our year was going to end. So, if given the opportunity to dive a little deeper into blended learning and what that means for you, take it. Take it. It is a, it's a blessing, and I think it also shows our kids that as lifelong learners, we are constantly evolving and working to, to improve our experience as teachers and as partners with our kids in their learning. So, definitely take the opportunity with blended learning, and I think the biggest win, the biggest win is time and a nudge. All of us need that in, in teaching. You need time to do the new things, and you need the nudge and the push to try things that definitely stretch you and maybe push you outside of your comfort zone.
So, with that, I just want to give a big shout out to all of our cohort members. This was only a small selection of them. You guys, you'd be amazed at what, what genuine reflections we get from some of the teachers when they go through that. And as Carly put it, there isn't a bigger nudge than I know of than distance learning and pushing us out of our comfort zone. So, with that, I'm going to let Lori take over. She will go through the rest of the slideshow. Lori, you ready?
Yes, I am. So, the blended learning cohort is one of the big things that our digital learning team works on during the year. The, so in March, then after spring break, we learned that we would be in the distance learning model across Minnesota. So, we scrambled, we collaborated with district and school administrative teams. We thought very purposefully and wanted to focus in on what, what distance learning would look like and what our teachers would need for tools and for training, knowing that they would be online. So, we developed a list of tools and began to prepare to train all of our teachers across the district. So, we'll talk about some of those trainings that we conducted next year. But again, we focused on the needs of all of the teachers across the district. Next. So, one of the first things we recognized that our teachers would need was a way to record a video of either themselves and/or course material for their students that they could be teaching as a replacement for the face-to-face. So, we developed a number of training materials. We held four live webinars to demonstrate the screencasting process. We made recommendations on which tools to use, and then we showed them how to use those tools. We had over 250 staff members participate in these webinars. We also recorded them and sent them out to staff in case they missed the live training. So, our first one was on screencasting and uploading to YouTube, which Dave is now an expert at. He's been doing that for many, many years. Next?
I had, I had a good teacher.
The next thing we did, or the next big process that we had to work out, was how the teachers were going to conduct live video conferences with their classes and/or just one student at a time. We knew we weren't going to have live classes going all day long, but we knew that there would still be a need for some video conferencing for the, for the teachers and the students. So, we developed a number of training materials again, and we made a bunch of tutorials for staff to watch. We taught staff how to use it with the student's safety and privacy in mind, and we landed on using Google Meet, which is what we are using for our meetings as well here. Next. We gathered quite a bit of resources for all the teachers, specifically focusing in on sharing the best practices for teachers during distance learning. We developed a brand-new website for all of our teachers to go, just kind of a one-stop shop for them to look and find things that they needed, because we knew we were going to have an information overload, and we needed to be able to do that efficiently. So, we have material posted here specifically just for elementary teachers. We have pages for secondary teachers, and then all teachers together. We have, also have a number of general tech tips that we've been sharing all the way along since the beginning on how to work from home and how to access everything that they need to be able to access. In the beginning, in March and April, we sent out daily emails with a lot of information as things were changing quite often, and it was a place for teachers to get the updates, and then we'd always refer them back to our website. Now, with May, we've scaled back quite a bit on those emails that we're pushing out, but we're probably doing one a week yet with, for the teachers with new information for them. Next. We've also been providing a ton of support for our teachers during this distance learning time. We identified teachers who we knew would need a lot of extra support with the tools that they were supposed to be using, and we checked in with them daily at first. We were able to view their screens using Google Meet and provide one-on-one support. So, a lot of times, it was just walking them through how to use the different tools and what they needed to be doing. All the other teachers, though, have been very good about contacting us if they need help or if they have a question, and we use Google Meet quite a bit for that as well. We can do some things over email, but a lot of times, the live help is the best way for us to go. Next slide. So, our teachers have taken what we've taught them previously, and they are learning how to use many, many more new tools. Well, specifically at the secondary, SchoolG was a new learning management system for us. It was new to everyone in the fall. We did a number of trainings in August and in September, and then throughout the school year, showing them how to use more and more of the tools. But our teachers have really gone above and beyond using the basics of SchoolG, and they are using all of the built-in tools. On this example here, you can see that they're creating screencasted videos. They're embedding that into SchoolG. They've got directions showing the students how to complete something or where to find something on the SchoolG page and how to work through their tasks. They've been posting weekly schedules with links to more information. They're using Google Docs all the time with the students. And then the last example just shows how the teachers are organizing their page. So, that's been one of the key things that we've told teachers to focus in on is really make sure your pages are organized so students can find what they need to. They have to check in for attendance and then find their assignments, and we don't want them hunting around. So, we came up with a system of here's what it should look like and how you should be posting materials. They're also using SchoolG video conferences. They have a video conferencing tool built in, and they're also using Google Meets with their students, and they're using the messaging tools that are built right into SchoolG to communicate with their students and the families. Next slide. So, in the elementary, they are using CSISA as their primary landing spot every day when they are going to be finding their work. So, teachers have been posting a number of things. CSISA was a program that has been in our district for a few years, but they were primarily using it for IB, PYP portfolios, and mostly the journal feature. With distance learning coming into play, we've had every single teacher using more of the other tools that are available in there. On the left, you can see an activity that the students have. So, it's very interactive for the student. The teacher can see the work that they've done and comment back. The parents can also see this as well. And then on the right-hand side, we've got teachers recording video messages instead of their morning meeting that would take place face-to-face, and they're giving students directions for the day. We've also added a number of other teachers into the classes so that they can interact with the students. So, we've got ELL teachers, intervention, special ed teachers, counselors, et cetera. So, it's more than just the homeroom class and the specialist teachers. Next slide. So, overall, distance learning has driven more teachers to use more of the digital learning tools that we've purchased, and they are using some of our recommended free tools as well. So, I've got some elementary ones on the tablet up on the top there, and then on the lower computer screen. And you heard in the videos from the blended learning cohort teachers, they're using Perdeck, EdPuzzles, FlipGrids, Khan Academy, quizzes, Benchmark, BrainPop, Lexia to instruct students, but also monitor them and, and give some assessments. So, students are learning new content in new ways, since they can't be face-to-face, and they're showing what they know in a different way as well. This whole experience, though, has changed how teachers teach and students learn. Many have said that they will not go back to teaching the way that they used to teach in designing lessons the old way. They are going to use more digital learning tools in their teaching and for student learning. Next slide. So, we believe that we will see more blended learning next year. No matter what the format of school looks like, teachers will continue to use online tools to be more efficient in their teaching and to give students more agency, that voice and choice. A FIAD teacher told us, and I've got an example there. He, it was hard for him to have students reflect on their learning when they were in the gym. Now that they've had the online format, they're able to reflect on their learning. He's got them, giving them suggestions on what to do next. They're able to really know what their students want to do and where they're at, and they're able to meet them there. Next slide. So, as far as professional development for blended learning goes in our district, we don't know what direction we are going yet. We don't know if it'll be 100% online or if it'll be 100% face-to-face, or if we'll be able to do some sort of a blended learning model with our professional development for our teachers. We haven't determined what our cohorts and other professional development opportunities will look like, but we do know that we want to continue with blended learning instruction and support for our team, and we will have to be adaptable with our PD as well. Next slide. So, that about wraps up some of the work that our team has done this past year, focusing in on the cohorts and distance learning work that we've done. But we're wondering if you have any questions for us at this time.
Uh, does it look like, okay, okay.
I do, yeah. Actually, I have comments. I loved what Teacher Carly said about being in the cohort, cohort led them to be lifelong learners. And I just think, again, what a great example that was. It really struck me that she said that. Trying new things as a teacher, you know, who could have predicted that everybody would have been in this, forced to be in the blended cohort? But, but it really is such a, I think, a testament to trying new things and touching kids where you, you may not have, you know, even thought about that, that, that they learn, how they learn, and how they learn best. I know that, that in this household, it really was something that he's, he's come to love, and it's, just it's engaging him, and he can focus, and he can rewind and go back and say, what did she say? How do I, and sometimes, there isn't that in that face-to-face classroom. You know, if, if it moves along, if those kids who are learning, you know, kind of take it a different way, and you're left as a kid, like, I miss that. So, it just has given some really great opportunities, I think, for kids that we may not have seen before. And I love adding tech. I'm not techie, but I love the idea of adding tech into schools, because that's, that's what our kids are doing, and how do we meet them on that and help them? So, I just, I love this whole concept.
Thank you.
Well, I like the blended learning concept too, but I probably am feeling the opposite of Linda in the sense of all of this digital learning, that kids are just sitting in front of iPads and laptops and cellphones, and what happens to our humanity? What happens to our ability to communicate? You know, 80% of communication is facial expression. And if they're sitting and staring constantly at a monitor or iPad, we're, I feel like we're really losing our humanness and, and building relationships with each other. I fear for all of this technology that we're bringing, bringing into schools. It really worries me for the future.
And Nikki, if I could just comment on that, you know, I do a lot of video conferencing. That's all I do every day in my job, and I'm a therapist. And I think it, I think it takes real awareness, number one. It takes great deliberate thought to reach out. There are going to be kids who are, kids and people who are just naturally able to do this, right? I can look at the screen, and I can see your face. I can read it well. I can, I can chat with you and talk about it, and then there are people and kids who aren't. And then those are the ones that you kind of, you know, you would in real life anyways as a teacher. And then those are the ones that you kind of, you know, you would in real life anyways as a teacher, right? You'd kind of drag them out a little bit more. I agree with you. I don't think it's it's um, I would be a fan of online school if all of a sudden, you know, that was an option. Um but I do think adding pieces of this into their day um helps with with their future. I don't know what the experts say.
Added adding pieces is one thing. Making it a, you know, the majority of their learning is another thing.
Yeah, yeah.
But in this case, it's a stopgap measure in a traumatizing time. And we're doing what we have to do and we're learning what we can from from this. And what I love about what I've heard is I love that the staff is, their creativity has been triggered. That uh this did not overwhelm, but it actually uh energized. Um I also um know that that since the minute I got onto the school board, the talk about personalized learning, uh how how we need to go that direction. And this this time, this pandemic time has been an opportunity to explore that. And I want to hope that good things will come of it. Um and I think we're already seeing that. So um my question for Lori is, um so I assume the teachers are settling in feeling more efficient, less efficient. How are they um translating, keeping on top of things?
So yeah, I would say they are settling in. Um a lot of them are like, okay, I've got this main stuff down now. I've got the basics down. Now I want to learn how to do something else or I want to shake things up a little bit for the students and I want to try something different. So what do you think about this? So we're guiding them to the next step. Um and just going back to what Nikki said about the the, you know, being uh online a hundred percent of the time. Blended learning is not advocating for a hundred percent online instruction. It is using the best of face-to-face with the technology pieces of it and using that in the classroom. Um so what we're doing this during distance learning is not all blended learning. And um I don't think any of our students are sitting up in front of the computer the entire time. Hopefully the teachers have some assignments and they say, okay, read this, you know, passage out of the book or go and do this thing and then report back. So I don't think that the student is online all day. And that's not advocating for with blended learning either.
Right, and I didn't say a hundred percent. Um and and have you spoken with parents? I I have a neighbor that has four children in the district and I, she said, I cannot get my son off of the iPad. He just wants to be on the iPad all the time. Now that he's doing his learning on the iPad, that's all he wants to do. And I I think it would be interesting to survey parents and find how it has gone for them, you know, in their own homes. And I do understand that this is a difficult time. I I get it, but I'm also hearing, and perhaps I'm misunderstood, but I'm hearing we're talking about the future too. This is, you know, once the pandemic is is uh under some sort of control and we can go back to the classroom, which I also have been talking with teachers and I can't believe how many of them are like, I can't wait to get back in my classroom. I hate being at home doing this. So, you know, people are just feeling so disconnected. So I I my two cents, I just, I just hope that we don't forget that human piece, especially with the little ones.
Yeah, I think Nikki make a good point. Uh we can't forget the human piece. We are in a human business.
Yes.
So the there are uh, I'll just say many school districts around the state. When the pandemic hit, they hadn't, they didn't have a unity that supported their school district with a technology levy in twenty seventeen. They didn't have people in place training their teachers on how to make this shift. So when we were shifting into distance learning and providing at least face-to-face uh connections with kids, other districts were running photocopies and dropping it at their door. And so if you want um kind of cold and disconnected, that's not the district we want. And uh my dad always had a phrase and growing up that we always have to make the best of a bad situation. And so I just think our tech leadership team uh because of their training for the last several years has helped us make the best of a bad situation. Um we're not for all, but we do want to keep connecting with our families and our kids. And I think for parents, in many ways, they've gotten to see the teachers in action and see the good things that our our schools are doing from a different angle. Um not that we're recommending staying in this mode, but uh it's provided some uh some insight to our district that um aren't always in the past.
And I think it's it's been exacerbated too by uh everybody feeling isolated. So it's not like kids have been doing some online stuff and then they can go play. Or, you know, we have a party at the end of the week or whatever it is, I think. So it it feels like this is all that they have, you know, this this iPad, that's the only thing. And and it has been for a lot of families. Um and hopefully it won't look like that going forward.
I hope not.
Yeah.
Any other comments or question? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Nikki.
I'm sorry, Jeff. But I do, I do want to give the, you know, my thanks to the tech uh the department and what they have done to make this happen in our district um and to keep the kids en- engaged. And I it's, I know you've been working very hard and um I I thank you. I thank you for your efforts.
Thanks, Nikki. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I echo those comments that uh we've heard such good things about how this has all been set up. And uh so congratulations on that. I know it all goes back to the the second point in our vision that talks about setting every student up with personalized learning. I remember thinking, how in the world will we do that? And then as I uh sat in on a cohort and learned more about the the blended learning, I said, that's how we're gonna do it. So I think all of that work, as Dave said, over the past few years, really set us up for success in this period. So I congratulations on that. I really do think Nikki's point is very important for everyone to keep in mind that there is a personal side of this that's going to be very important to keep an eye on. But um but as long as we do that, we have success with that as well.
Yeah, and lots of skill building when we do get them back in the classroom face-to-face.
Jeff, could I just add one more comment of?
You absolutely sure can.
Just the struggling learners. So the ability for a student to hear a lesson two or three times or to get caught up um being three units behind because uh there there was a family struggle or their own health struggle. Um there is a place in our future for uh being able to accelerate for students that are behind and supporting them to be able to hear uh a lesson two or three or as many times as they need to get it and to uh achieve the standard and move forward. So again, it's a tool uh like any tool. It's uh it's not perfect. Uh there's room for improvement. Uh and it's just helped a number of our kids. Uh just, there are uh, I'll just say there are some autistic students in our school district right now that are accelerating um and really thriving uh with digital learning and distance learning uh that maybe had some struggles in the past. So uh it's again, not the end-all, be-all, but we are making the best of a bad situation. And I too give a shout out to our tech leadership team.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. I thank you to the presenters. Uh this is a really good stuff. Anybody else have any final questions or comments for these guys? If not, we'll move on. Um Dr. Webb, I'm correct in assuming that there was nothing for public listening session?
That's correct. We do want to just remind our staff and public that we provide an opportunity for uh connection and communication with the board on every upcoming meeting. We we have a form on our website for our opening uh listening session. And then we report out uh during this time on what we've heard. So nothing tonight, Jeff, but just wanted to remind the community of that.
Thank you, Dave. Um where has anybody seen a passion ignited in the last couple of weeks? I know it's tough because we're all home, but.
Yeah, I did watch the scholarship um on the on the cable channel, the scholarship. It's not really a banquet, but the presentation. Um and I that I guess that's another thank you I would like to put out there and perhaps even write a thank you to the Educational Foundation from the school board, thanking them for everything they did to pull that together. And they, I I just think it was handled beautifully. Um it, you know, I I just sincere thanks for all the work you did.
I love that idea of a handwritten note, Nikki. That's such a good idea.
Um if everybody's okay, have at it, Nikki.
I I mean, yeah, I I would.
If it's just everybody give a, everybody give a thumbs up if she's, if it's okay.
I I would be happy to do it. I did have one question for Lisa. Do we have um like a South St. Paul sa- uh stationary or, you know, little thank you cards that has the logo on it? Because I'd like to use that.
I can answer on Lisa's behalf. Yes, we do.
Okay.
We have a number of uh really nice cards.
Okay, I have to, I have to go in tomorrow to sign some papers and um I'd love to be able to pick up a few of them and keep them on hand.
I'll leave them on Lisa's counter here tonight.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Nikki. Anybody else?
Yeah, Jeff, um as I was out on my walk today, I was thinking about the season, Memorial Day. And I'd like to thank all the people who um participated in the in the services during the wars, including my brother Bob, who was in World War II as a paratrooper before his fifteenth birthday. And I'd also like to thank all the people who are helping us get through, the volunteers, the delivery, the health workers and everything. And sometime during this meeting, I just wanted to thank everybody and tell them I'm thinking about them. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, Jeff, I'd I'd like to add, unless Chris wants to go, sorry.
You go ahead, Wendy, then Chris.
You start it, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add a little thing to what Bill was just saying about, you know, yesterday being Memorial Day. I want to put a personal thank you out to former school board member Lori Flatley. You probably noticed around town, she had some signs made recognizing uh past members of our community who 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 did service um dur- during different wars and different events, you know, in history. So I just want to thank Lori for recognizing community members, former South St. Paul graduates and everyone in our town for for their military service, protecting our country and serving our land. So thank you again to Lori.
Thank you, Wendy. Chris?
Yeah, I just would like, the the passion I've seen is with the efforts that our teachers are going through to connect uh face-to-face at a social distance with their students. Um there's been so many posts uh on social media of teachers going around to the homes of the students and meeting with them and giving little gifts. And you can't help but notice that kids in all those pictures just have the biggest grins on their face. I also heard a a story of uh Lori Schubot, who got a new student right after spring break. So the new student was added to her class with no opportunity to meet her classmates because we were already out of the buildings at that point. And so she arranged a social distancing gathering at a park where the some of the students could come and meet this new student, you know, at a distance, but yet at least know their face and and such. And I just thought that was pretty special that she would go to that effort to help out that new student. And then uh.
I love that story, Chris.
Yeah, that was, I was really touched with that. And then I saw the cutest one was the bedtime story that the, I believe it was the Capoja teachers put together where the teachers read the stories and then the kids came on and showed their stuffed animals and everything. And again, everybody just had these big smiles on their faces. So it's um it means a lot to me that they're taking the efforts that they are to to uh stay engaged with the kids as best as they can under the circumstances. So that's a, that's the passion that I've seen over the past few weeks.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would, I would take on to that, Chris. Um and Ms. Amory has been doing um all these games. And, you know, in the best of times in a classroom to have kids playing Pictionary and Treasure Hunt and all these things like that takes a lot of patience, but to do it virtually um on itty-bitty little screens. And uh I I give teachers a lot of credit for um trying still to have that classroom feel and to have kids talk to each other and see what's in each other's homes. Um it's a different level. It's a different level for sure of of being familiar um, you know, with family members and pets and all of that stuff. So it is a little different, but I give them a lot of credit because um a lot of running around, kids, running crazy.
I'd like to add just one more thing. Um a couple of days ago, I received um a message from a parent of a student that I taught when she was in fifth grade. And um they had been homeschooled. And then when they, when they were in fifth and sixth grade, they came to Capoja. And I mean, I haven't been in the classroom in twenty years. And here I get this letter popping up from this mom who I know and um and also wanting to thank John for everything she did for her son at Capoja, you know, transitioning from homeschooling to public school. And that on Sunday, he graduated from law school and has his law degree. And the mom is, I mean, there she's so proud, but uh the the piece that came to me, because this is not about tooting our horns at all. This is, it's about, this is why we do it. This is, you know, this is why people go into education and and, you know, do their best to, you know, help kids along and reach their dreams and their goals. And I I was just so touched that she took the time to, I mean, it's been twenty years. And uh but I really wanted to send it on to Dave. Dave, just like in this time of everything that's going on with graduation and everything, that that this was a reminder of why we do what we do.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Nikki. That good. Uh I guess we'll move on to human resources up, resourcing update with Kathy Miller. Kathy?
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Webb. So we do have a lengthy um staffing report in your packet this evening, so I will uh go through it. Uh the first part, as usual, is the certified staffing. And we have a a few appointments in the certified area and uh change of assignment. And then we have the beginnings of some summer school and middle school and and credit recovery there. And then a couple of leaves of absence and resignation uh in the ECA area. Are there any questions um before we move on to classified?
I I have one, Kathy. Jess Davis is what, that's just, could you explain that one a little bit to me?
Uh yes, so I believe you're referring to the ECA position.
Yes.
Extracurricular assignment. So it's a MAP League advisor, so she's resigning from that extracurricular assignment.
Okay, I I misread it, thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions on certified? Okay, I will move on where a bulk of the staffing action is uh for the classified staffing. Again, a lengthy report there. And so um you know, due to the the pandemic and the uncertainty around the twenty twenty-one school year, uh we have a lengthy staffing actions of releasing or laying off a number of staff. And this decision has been discussed and you've been involved in these discussions too for many weeks. And uh so before you, we have um some recommendations as a result of that. So let me kind of go through these and then I'm happy to answer any questions. So uh we do have some changes of assignment first for the twenty twenty-one uh school year. Some hour changes under our special ed assistance, uh some preliminary hours for community preschool. Under section B, so this would be the numbers one through thirty-six, we have uh some layoffs in our early learning assistant area. And then uh a number of leaves of absence or extensions of leaves for a number of individuals. leaves of absence or extensions of leaves for a number of individuals. Uh, and just a reminder, the the layoffs for our early learning assistants. Um, so they have rights in their contract to be recalled to a position uh, when and if that becomes available. So that's what a layoff means uh, in this regard. So that gets us to um, page three and uh, kind of the bottom there. So of the below number thirty-six, so we speak about releasing from positions. So here uh, at both uh, Capoja and Lincoln and then also at the secondary, it's uh, positions that are student support positions. So whether it's lunchroom supervisor or student support assistance or parking lot, those positions support students when kids are in school. Uh, so direct, direct uh, contact with students. So those positions and individuals in there are um, being recommended to be released. And again, this has, is all due to the uncertainty of of the twenty twenty-one school year. Uh, down a little bit further on the page, releasing bus aids. If we don't have transportation, we wouldn't have the need for bus assistance. Uh, and then our cleaners, our part-time cleaners that come in and clean our buildings on school days. So there is a number of cleaners that are listed there. Uh, and that's, since it's uncertain whether or not we will actually have school in the fall, those positions are being released. So again, a very lengthy uh, staffing report and very difficult decisions and recommendations to bring forward to you. Are there any questions?
I will say it's probably been pretty hard for you guys to do this. Very difficult.
It is hard. I won't uh, uh, try to sugarcoat that at all. Um, it is very difficult. It's been a discussion that we've been talking about for weeks and and hoping that we wouldn't have to bring forward this recommendation, but um, yes, it is very difficult uh, for the principals and department leads that had to have those conversations with with individuals. So, yes.
And everybody has been notified?
Yes, uh, person, in-person conversa- or by phone conversations had took place last week before the board packet was distributed.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Okay, if not, I will move on to the continuance of contracts.
All right, um, so uh, this is a an annual part of our staffing process. This has to do with our our teacher contracts. So in your packet is a list of probationary teacher, the teachers that we are recommending to retain or to continue on for the twenty twenty-one school year. And also those teachers who have um, would satisfy the requirements to attain tenure. So a list of tenured teachers for twenty twenty-one and then probationary teachers to retain. Any questions on this report?
No, no questions, Kathy, but I'd just like to congratulate our teachers on getting their tenure. It's always exciting to see the name, the list of teachers. So we thank them for their hard work and probationary teachers were great. We're excited to have you back again next year too. So thank you.
Seventeen uh, teachers that we're granting tenure to, so uh, lots to be proud of there.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Webb, district update.
Thank you, and uh, we're going to just provide a brief update on uh, the closeout of our school year, beginning to turn our sights to summer and even to the fall and just share what we know. Lisa, if you want to display your screen, we'll just uh, let the board follow along visually as I talk through the slides. So we um, as we close out our school year, we do have a lot to celebrate. Uh, nobody denies that it's been a challenge in the pandemic. Um, just staying connected, feeling connected, uh, supporting, but I'm proud, if you want to go to the next slide, Lisa, of just the amount that we're able to continue doing during the pandemic. So you've heard uh, one of our previous board meetings that we're getting uh, forty-six hundred meals out the door in our emergency meal distribution. You know that we have our emerg- emergency childcare where we're serving uh, students at Capoja, about thirty students of our emergency personnel uh, every single day. Uh, and you just heard a really nice presentation from our um, uh, from blended learning and our digital cohort leadership team that really has been providing this type of groundwork and laying the groundwork for this shift over the past several years. So uh, while we weren't fully ready to go for a digital shift into the pandemic, we were as prepared as any school district in the state. So it's good planning, good preparation, good partnership with our teachers and our tech leadership teams and uh, learning together. So uh, I'm going to begin to go to the next slide here. And uh, as we start turning our sights now to summer program, we've been given guidance from the state on uh, guidelines for what we can allow and provide and support for our families during the summer. So in those guidelines, we're continuing to prepare for summer experience. We want to give you a taste of what that looks like. Uh, first is the whole summer learning experience. So uh, under the targeted services umbrella, which is uh, allows us to provide continued learning and instruction. We're going to stay in our distance learning mode to allow our students and staff to stay connected, to continue to accelerate uh, in literacy and math and other areas uh, uh, early on in our elementaries and uh, extend into our uh, eight subject areas into our secondary, our middle school. And again, in high school, allow for our credit recovery programming. So we're uh, excited about continuing our learning in June and July uh, and continuing to support instruction for our community during the pandemic. We also uh, we are, we provided a footprint over the last about six weeks to provide seven meals a day. We're going to continue to try to strive to do that. We're working out all the final details. Communication uh, will be coming. We might have to make some slight modifications to our footprint and our plan, but we're still trying to meet the goal and vision of providing meals uh, for our families, especially our struggling families where there might have been uh, parents that have lost jobs or uh, be currently out of work and families that really need that support. We're going to try to still meet and deliver seven meals a day. Uh, childcare, we are, we sent out a survey actually just about five hours ago to our families at the elementary level to find out their interest in childcare and support for the summer. So we worked with our tri-district partners in Inver Grove Heights and West St. Paul and South St. Paul to align our programming offering and costs and whatnot. And at the end of the day, uh, we have to find out if there's enough interest um, uh, moving ahead for the summer to see if we'll be running us our summer childcare or not. So we'll get those survey results back in just a few days and be able to get a direction on summer care. Finally, targeted services, like I mentioned, will continue our instruction uh, for all levels of our system and excited to do so. Next. As we begin hardly discussing, what does school look like in September? We know that there are truly three key options. We're hoping that option A is our option, that there is a vaccine, that we are able to return to school and get back with all of our friends and colleagues and uh, just like you heard Nikki say, can we get back face to face and make it, get the human touch back and key focus? So that's the preferred option for all of us. And we know that we don't control all of, uh, we don't control the results of the pandemic and the impact. We are looking at option B as well, which is a hybrid model, some distance learning um, and some in-person instruction. Uh, we don't know if uh, that could be quarter of a students coming in at a time in a classroom, half of our students on every other day model. Half of our students coming half of a day and the other half coming the second half of the day. So we're exploring all those hybrid models. And I'll just tell you that there are three hundred and thirty other school districts in the state doing the exact same thing right now. Option C is distance learning, is what we're doing right now. And uh, even if we are in option C, we still have room for improvement and training and growth this summer and we'll stay at that. At the end of the day, we'll also follow all the state guidance and I will tell you honestly that the state guidance has come out last minute. Um, we just got graduation guidance just a couple of weeks ago. We got summer school guidance just ten days ago. So we're doing our best getting guidance out. And so if it seems slow from the district, know that it's slow from the state and we're getting it out and turning it around as fast as we can. Next. We also know, and it's no secret that we just faced uh, budget reductions this school year. We had four million dollars in budget reductions as a school district. We also know that the pandemic is placing additional pressure on uh, not only our school budget, but school budgets across the state. We're seeing increased expenses and decreased revenue due to the pandemic. We'll have to continue to manage through that as we move forward. Uh, we're going to be continuing to manage uh, administratively and continue to make recommendations to the school board. So uh, we will uh, do our homework, continue to bring those recommendations back and keep you and the public apprised of all of our uh, pandemic-related expenses and uh, decreases in revenue. Next, we also know that uh, as we continue to get the the updated guidelines and uh, and um, updates throughout the summer, uh, we know that about weekly, we get new and different and changing information. We'll continue to be a source of communication for our community. We get, we'll continue to have communication out to families on our website throughout our districts, to staff and to the school board. So just know that we'll continue to update you as we get those guidelines as well. Next. I'm going to quiet down for a second and give you an opportunity as well, just to ask questions on the board.
Dave, uh, my question is, as we go into summer and then um, plan for next fall, how confident are you that all our bases are covered at this point?
Um, I can tell you that uh, no district that I know has all their bases covered for the fall. So I'm in a lot of different groups with superintendents and everyone is struggling on that, just, oh, let's just use the word hybrid. So if students come partial days or every other day or so, uh, then you have to change all of your staffing structures and systems and transportation structures and systems. And uh, we're not, we're not ready and prepared yet. So fortunately, we do have the summer and we have to be prepared and get prepared. And so the pandemic is, continues to play a lot of tough cards uh, in front of us and we have to keep playing our cards the best we can.
Uh, let me restructure this question again, Dave. Are you optimistic, pessimistic or indifferent?
About opening school in the fall?
And summer.
So summer, we'll be in distance learning mode. So we're already planning there. Uh, we're waiting for parents to respond for childcare. Um, and uh, we will just continue to support and follow guidance from the state. So we're, we're prepared for summer. We're fully prepared for a distance learning targeted services learning experience. And everybody's yearning, myself included, just to be back with no pandemic.
Um, can I ask one more time, Dave?
Yeah, yeah.
Pessimistic, indifferent. I I just, I want an answer is what I want.
So uh, we already have our structure for the summer, so I'm going to go to fall. Uh, I'm just not seeing the pandemic uh, waning a whole lot. I I go on like probably many people do and log on to data from our CDC and the state Minnesota Department of Health. And um, so um, I'll just share one story with you, Bill. So um, at the beginning of March, we had spring break here in South St. Paul. At this, uh, during spring break, um, when the pandemic started ripping across our country, uh, we had students in Europe and borders got closed and uh, there was a fear for even just getting our kids out of Europe. And then can we get them home safely and can we protect them in the pandemic? Uh, we got them home safely. Uh, the governor said you need to keep schools open and uh, we actually closed schools here in South St. Paul because we had, coming off spring ba- break, we had people coming out of Europe, people coming off of cruise ships. And it wasn't safe to open our schools. So uh, right at that point, uh, we then, the governor actually followed after we uh, canceled school for two days, the state followed suit and we've been in distance learning ever since. So I'm not really optimistic right now that we are going to be full open in the fall. And so on those options A, B and C, I'm uh, more optimistic about B and C than about A.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave, I have a question too. When, when do you expect the decision to be made as to what we will have in the fall, beginning of August, mid-August? So that we, you know, give us enough planning time to get everything ready for next year?
So we have to follow guidance from the state and uh, we're going to have a conversation about graduation in just a minute. Um, you know, everybody wants to be on our football field and I do too, and so does the whole high school staff and uh, students and community. And um, we saw in the front page of the St. Paul paper, if you don't follow state guidance, the hot water you can get into really quickly. So uh, I will work with our team and my assurance to the board is we will communicate with the board and community as soon as we get the latest updates in state guidance. If I had to predict, I don't think we're going to see anything from the state until August. And I can't tell you what date that would be in August, but I don't think they're going to come out early. Uh, nothing has been early coming out of state guidance and I don't, there's, I don't, I might be sounding like I'm blaming the state. We're just following the state and honestly, the state is following the Minnesota Department of Health. And so the state's in a different place where they're actually following the health leaders making decisions for schools and for the state. So September school will be dependent upon an August state recommendation.
So Dave, if that is true, how could we possibly enact a hybrid model? Both schedule-wise, but also financially. I mean, that, that's a huge reset. And considering our budget challenges anyway, I, I can't see how that hybrid plan could be launched, could it?
Yeah, so I had a couple hour meeting with my administrative team last Wednesday and we uh, looked at all those barriers and uh, the cleaning costs alone are dramatic increases. Um, and so it's, we're still having trouble getting disinfectant and dispensers and uh, supplies and so I was in conversation uh, with Mark Fenton today just about um, hey, uh, we need to be looking at all the Plexiglas and guards and shields and those types of things. We still have to be planning to open school for the fall. Um, whether or not the state guidance will allow it or not. So we're going to be prepping and being ready. And at the end of the day, we might not make the decision.
I question the wisdom. I mean, I see, I see our administration just scrambling and scrambling. And it feels like the state needs to move faster. Because I can't see our administration spending all that effort setting up a hybrid situation and not using it. That seems like a waste of time. Um, I'm disappointed that the state can't move faster for the sake of our, our schools. We, we have to know. We, we have to know. So I'm just venting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not disagreeing. And I'll just say about 10 days ago, we got the summer school guidance. We were planning for summer school back in January and February.
Hey Dave, with our budget as bad as it is, and we're going to get funding for the summer programming, right?
Yep, targeted services is, and we do recoup funding for students that participate. So we're not going out on the limb for programs that we are just expending free and clear. We want to make sure they're, we're getting reimbursed and that's reimbursable program.
Thanks. Any other questions for Dave? Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Sorry, I have better news there. It's just still the pandemic.
Yep, yep. Next, we need to talk about what we want our board meetings to look like in June.
Jeff, could I just take one more second on graduation? Is that?
No, that's next.
Is it next? Did I skip one?
You skipped one. I'm right for once. For once, I'm right.
All right, way to go. Thank you.
So we would need to, to talk about what we want our board meetings to look like. Do we want it to look like it's, like it's looking tonight? Do we want to go back to an hour split than an hour or something completely different? What does everybody think?
I like, I like this model. Cause I'm, I'm assuming that, that it's still going to be virtual, right? We're not going to go back into the, okay, so.
Hang on, that's another decision. That's another decision that we, I, if you want to go to the boardroom, I, I think we could. I don't want to, but that's an option.
I would be hesitant. I think it would be really difficult to social distance in that little room. If it were just us, we could, but if we have, you know, the visitors, there's, there's no way. They, they would, they sit on top of each other as it is now.
Okay. Can I, can I get a reading from everybody if they want to start going back? Should we start there? If they want to start going back to the boardroom?
Not yet. I don't think it's.
Me? No, I say no.
Okay, Chris?
Yep, I say no as well. By getting married at the end of June and although the ceremony is going to be much smaller than originally anticipated, I would not be able to attend in June, just for that reason.
Okay, I think everybody's in agreement then. Okay. Then do we want it to look like it's looking tonight? I guess is my next question.
So I, I was saying that then, I, I like this, I like us getting back to the discussion piece. I think we've been missing that, talking about things and, you know, having, having, I don't know, probably not debate is not the right word, but, you know, discussion. What are the words for discussion or discourse? Nikki, you're our thesaurus.
Oh, gabbing.
There you go. That's the word I would use. So yeah, so I, I, I do like this. Having all the pieces in again that we have, it's just virtual.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
How truly open meeting, people are able to access it in this format instead of trying to make other arrangements. So I think this is the best.
Patty?
So this meeting is public though. It is, it is broadcast from start to finish. So I am concerned that, are we concerned at all about brevity, about, you know, fully talking things through? Because it is a public meeting?
That's a good question.
Good question.
I think it's a more transparent, to be honest. And then the public can actually see what we actually do in the call meeting. That's just my feeling.
So how do the flipped videos play into that then?
So tonight, we had a number of reports. We didn't flip. So you got the full blended learning presentation, you got the full staffing presentation. You got my update and it's a chance for us to really try to bring the cow on public TV. And so this is the blend of both. I like the, I like the rich discussion that followed each of the topics tonight.
Yeah, I think Patty, that we're virtual, I think the, the flip might just have to wait till we get back to meeting together. I don't, I don't know.
Well, I, I would hope that the flipped presentations would continue so I can come to the meeting informed.
Oh, there's that too.
So I can ask the, the questions, you know, the next questions. I would be concerned that the public would not be as informed. And so maybe those flipped presentations would need to be made available to the public also. And they are already, aren't they?
They are, yeah. And even our call meeting, our call meetings are public meetings.
Right. So I just wonder if we would make that known, that we are changing the format of the meetings and we will be, our starting point for discussion will be following the flipped presentations. That we come to the meetings with the information in hand as opposed to starting over, much like we did three years ago, where we would have the presentations live during the meeting. So I don't know, I'm just, I like the transparency too. I think it's a great idea. I just want to be efficient and, you know.
One, one concern that I had, or not a concern, it's just, I would like to see the public listening session inserted back into this somehow. Where we're three board members and Dave. I don't know how that would work.
So the, the night we had with the theater participation, we actually got 50 written communication pieces, which was helpful to continue to inform perspectives with the board. You know, the same night we heard from a few clerical staff as well. And so in this pandemic, the fortunate part is we're still getting communication. It's just with, if, with 52 people. It's, that's the challenge of.
That would be tough.
On-air management. And we are keeping that. That's why I advertised it again tonight. We want to make sure that we are hearing from community members that want to be heard.
I guess the question is, is everybody happy with this format? Should we just continue this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I'm happy with it for the time being, but I don't think anybody looks more forward to having an actual meeting as I do. To be able to see everybody and interact with them and come to decisions based on, on more than just seeing your heads, you know, I, I look forward to seeing your bodies. We have the facilities if we need them. We have a football field, we have a gymnasium, we have other places to hold meetings. But everybody has to be a hundred percent comfortable with it before we can do that. And so for, for right now, yeah, I'm happy, but I won't be happy till I see you all again.
And it's, it's hard to videotape, I suppose. I mean, I suppose they videotape football games, but it would sure be hard to get Town Square to come and find us in South St. Paul. Find us at Lorraine Park.
Okay, who's not comfortable with this next, with this, this style? Is anybody? Okay. All right, then we'll move on. Dave, now it's graduation time. You had your phones up. Dave, your graduation's up.
All right, I'm in order again. So thanks, Jeff. So just a brief update on the 2020 graduation. And, and in our school board said, hey, can we talk about this tonight? Cause you know, every district around us is the same mode we are where we're shifting to a virtual graduation. And when state guidance came out just a couple of weeks ago, you know, we were still planning for on-field, football field graduation. We had a backup plan at Wug Arena, which I thought was creative to socially distance there. Even on the football field, we expected to be end zone to end zone, six feet apart with our graduates. And then the guidance came out and said, we recommend everyone staying at home. We shifted to virtual. Fortunately, we have a virtual videographer and company that's helping us with the editing and coordinating. And some people think it's just one graduation, but we actually have two. So we have the Community Learning Center graduation and we have our traditional high school graduation. So we have to keep both of those ceremonies in mind. So both are shifting to virtual. And you know, I know it stinks is the bottom line. I know that people want to be in person. We've heard that loud and clear from our students and our parents. And so just to begin, we've heard you. And we also know that all the guidance from the state holds to, we have to be safe and we have to move in the safest possible manner, which is stay at home for the state guidance. They did put in some caveats with like a car parade. So we have some senior parents that have stepped up and are doing a nice job and working with our police department and coordinating a car parade. And then like I mentioned earlier, front page of the St. Paul paper, there was a district that recently got into trouble and some legal trouble now because they set up a stage to have people get out of the car. And the person setting up the stage was infected with COVID, infected others. And now anybody that really gets sick and possibly dies from that situation is liable, the district, the school district in Minnesota is liable. So that's really clear guidance from the Minnesota State School Board, from area attorneys that are providing guidance. So we have to be totally palms up and transparent with our community. That this isn't ideal. We're just, again, trying to make the best of a bad situation. Trying to honor and celebrate our 2020 grads in the best way possible and trying to do it in partnership with our community. So we're trying to, like the school board took action at their last meeting, trying to find ways that we can celebrate our grads. Can we turn our town maroon? Can we celebrate our students and recognizing that we're marooned and we bleed marooned and we want to celebrate our kids leading up to the 2020 commencement? And not just the graduates, but all of our South St. Paul kids for their dedication and distance learning. We also have done more in launching our social media campaign that will continue right through graduation to honor and celebrate, celebrate our grads. I mentioned the parade. Our mayor has gone out and has been leading the charge with our mayor's youth task force to commission this song with Cat Perkins called Shine. So that'll be debuting shortly. And so I'll leave you with a question more than an answer, which is just, what else can we do to keep celebrating our grants? I'll go back to you, Jeff, for comments and perspectives.
Anybody have comments on this that hasn't been already been said? No.
I, I have a little something. I'm, I know that no matter what we do, it just doesn't feel the same as, as having a regular graduation. And for that, I'm sorry. And I don't know if you've seen, been around town, but there are some amazing houses that have really, they've turned their whole house marooned. There's one on 12th North. There's one on Sixth as you're driving towards the Dairy Queen. And yes, I drive that way often on bike and in car and sometimes walking, sometimes in my sleep. And just some really, really cool houses. I've been really inspired. So thanks for, for doing your part and, you know, trying, celebrating.
And Lynn, I just want to thank you. You're the, one of the first ones that heard the MSBA guidance and shared it with us and the entire board. And bringing it back to just about the liability that districts incur if we were to gather and go against Governor Walz's guidance.
Yeah.
I will say, of all the graduations, I'm going to miss Composers Kindergarten. That's just a joy to go to anyway. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to add, as a board member, the graduation ceremonies for me personally are truly the highlights of the entire year as the culmination for our kids crossing that stage, getting their diplomas. And just always remember, class of 2020, the students, the families, the parents, you will never be forgotten. In my heart, you will never be forgotten for unfortunately, all the things that these students didn't get to share with their fellow classmates and families. So as hard as this is on everyone, we want you to be safe. You have a lifelong life ahead of you and we want you to be able to enjoy it healthy, faithfully and move on with your life and your career. So you will never, ever be forgotten. So we look forward to congratulating you as, as you move on in your life. So thank you, kids.
Thanks, Wendy. Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree with you, Wendy. And you know, I think each board member should kind of look inside and say, what, what is the responsible thing to do? What example are we setting? As far as graduation goes, I don't look at it as a, an ending. I look at it as a beginning. And I think that, that that's what we have to do. This is a special class and we'll do something special.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, I guess we'll move on to the business part of this tonight's meeting. I'm looking for a motion for the consent items, which include financial claims, bills payable, staffing, appointments, resignations, transfers, retirements, abolishments, and leaves. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lalliberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Motion passes. Next, we have 25 policies to approve and they can be found on the website. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lalliberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
And that is approved. Next is the approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the continuance of teachers' contracts for the 2020, 2021 bill. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dave, you want to touch back on this real quick?
Yeah, it's just more than anything, we're excited about our non-tenure teachers will have continued contracts. And our seventeen teachers that we are granting tenure to tonight, and we celebrate each of them.
Thanks, Dave. Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lalliberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Motion approves. Next is a resolution for the approval of the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2020, 2021 bill. to approve the 2020-2021 Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Lisa, will you read the resolution?
Resolves that the governing board of school district number six, county of Dakota, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine art events, referred to in Minnesota Statute Section 128(c)(01) to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by the Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the high schools listed below, South St. Paul Secondary, renews its membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Further resolve that this governing board hereby adopts the Constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook on file, excuse me, at the office of the school district or as appears on the league's website as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representatives identified by this governing board.
Oh, thank you, Lisa. That was a long one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Dave, you want to touch on this one too?
Sure. This is just our standard yearly resolution that allows us full entry into the state high school league and deems them kind of the official coordinator of all things activities and athletics.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Motion is approved. Next is the approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve appointing Wendy Felton as the South St. Paul Public School Special Board, Special School District Number Six, representative on the Intermediate School District 917 School Board for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2020. Dr. Webb?
Yes, just an explanation about what 917 is. So again, they're our special education service providing district. So we have a number of students with specialties, special education needs. And oftentimes, there are individual programs, like deaf and hard-of-hearing programs or some programs or EBD programs. And our partners with 917 have their own school district board. And so this is nominating Wendy to be re-upped as our South St. Paul representative for 917.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Wendy, you want to say a word?
Yes, it would truly be an honor for me to serve another term with Intermediate District 917, as it is a consortium of 10 school districts. We do serve, as Dr. Webb had said, special education needs, career and tech programs. We also do severely handicapped. We do juvenile service for students that may be incarcerated temporarily, the blind, visually impaired, deaf, hard-of-hearing students, mental health issues with students. It is a really large, large organization that serves Dakota County and Bloomington districts for our students with need. So it is an honor to have been their rep, and I would look forward to staying on one more term. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Arndt?
A definite yes.
Inspector Felton?
I'll be abstaining.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That is six yeas.
Motion passes. Next is board member reports and committee updates. And if you have attended a committee or like 917, put that in as well. So we'll start with Bill.
I have nothing tonight, Jeff.
Thank you, Bill. Linda?
Committee reports. Our tri-district committee was pushed back to June because of all the budget issues happening, and they just needed more time to prepare. So hopefully, we'll have a virtual meeting in June.
Okay, anything else you want? I mean, just share or...
Ah, no, I talked enough today.
Okay. Patty?
No committee meetings. I will share that I am going to be graduating with my Master of the Vinity on Sunday. And thank the school board for supporting me. It's been a crazy ride. I do have an internship to complete by the end of the summer, but it looks like it's full steam ahead. So lifelong learner here.
Yay!
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you, Patty. Nikki, you're up. Oh, she just left the building.
My landline is ringing and I don't work on it.
I'll come back to you if you want. Chris?
Well, congratulations, Patty, first of all. Second of all, much like what I talked about during the... Where we saw passion, I'd like to call out the themes that the school is doing on a daily basis, where they'll throw out a theme in the morning and ask people to send in pictures and videos and such that show them partaking in that theme. I've really enjoyed looking at those and really encourage people to participate in that. It's pretty fun. And then also, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts did have their final meeting last week. We had several guest speakers that kind of wrapped up the school year, most notably, in my opinion, was Heather Mueller from the Department of Education, who rattled through a lot of things and basically a lot of the same information that Dr. Webb shared with us earlier about the summer possibilities. She noted that the ACT testing has been canceled. Talked about possibilities for the fall. Patty had mentioned, you know, we need to know as soon as possible. I wrote down her exact words as far as that goes. No decisions have been made yet as to the format of the fall, but we're pushing to decide as early as possible. So whatever you take from that, that's what the Department of Education told us last week. And then some other things. They talked about graduation and just emphasized, again, all of the things that we've talked about tonight. There were other speakers. Tom Melcher, who is the finance guru, school finance guru for the state of Minnesota, talked and got into the details of some of the changes that were made by the legislative session. Excuse me, they were quite detailed, so I wouldn't be able to even talk to some of those. But that was the final meeting for the AMST, and we'll take the summer off and start again in the fall. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. All right, Nikki, back to you.
We did have a virtual meeting last Thursday with... For Central Square. And kind of the bottom line is, you know, comparing the budget from last year to this year, they're only down $3,000.
Wow.
Which was, I thought was pretty remarkable considering, you know, people aren't using the facilities.
Right.
But, you know, there's cost savings in other areas. But I just think Chris Esser and Shannon Young are just doing a bang-up job maintaining Central Square and keeping people informed. And just, everybody's just looking forward to when it opens again.
Thanks, Nikki. Wendy, you're last. Well, I'll be last, but you can go.
As you know, with the Education Foundation, they did their scholarship presentation virtually. So I really want to commend them, their staff, for doing such a great job and congratulate all of our students for earning them scholarships. So we look forward to seeing them move on with their careers and with their future. So super job to the foundation. And with 917, they too are planning virtual-type graduations for their students, you know, throughout their different facilities. So it'll be just a busy two weeks for all of us. As we know, this time of year is super busy, but it's also fun, it's exciting, it's happy. We just wish things were back to normal, but we congratulate our kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Equity Alliance had their meeting last week, or yeah, last week. And it was our budget meeting. And Equity Alliance is in financial straits, just like our district is in financial straits. They have one year of operating. So if money doesn't start coming in, they're going to be done. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas at 6:42.
Motion approved, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.